I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Got a couple of different presentations tonight. An annual one we do. I'd like to invite the Tree Board up. And we've got a proclamation, and I'd like to ask them to maybe share a few words. Papillion's been Tree City, USA for 35 years? Thirty-five, thirty-six years? Probably not the longest in the state, but right up there. Taking urban forestry very serious for the last 35 years. People don't realize in Hallock Park, we have a state-certified arboretum, one of the few in the state that's outside of a university or a public power or a Lawrence and Gardens or something like that, and that's because of the work the Tree Board did 25-plus years ago. And you just drive around, and a lot of times, some of the things that are different in quality of life in Papillion, the development goes back to the urban forestry and the trees. So really want to thank them for their work. I've got a proclamation I'd like to give. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees increase our property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees where they are planted are a source of joy. Whereas Papillion has achieved Tree City, USA status, there's the answer, 34 consecutive years. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day. Urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. I'd like to give this to you guys, and then maybe have you share a few words?
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Tree Board here. We've got some, as Mayor just mentioned, coming shortly is the celebration of Arbor Day. Not this Friday, but Friday, the April 28th, is officially Arbor Day. And our 2023 event, I'm excited to say, is at Big Elk Lake Recreation Area on 108th and Cornuska Road. This year's Arbor Day theme is Native Americans, Native Trees. It's been a fun, a fun project. It's a, it's a nice opportunity for us to acknowledge the, this great leader of the Omaha Tribe in conjunction with the invaluable resource we have in trees. This, on the 28th, we'll be hosting a tree planting. We'll be planting three native trees near the shelter, picnic shelter there at the park. The Papillion Junior Women's Club will be on hand to present the winners of the Papillion 4th Grade Elementary Arbor Day poster contest. We had a lot of great submissions for that, and it was really fun to go through all those exciting renderings that all these kids have put together, their, their interpretation of, of Native Americans and Native trees. They'll have some drinks and treats will be available. OPPD Forester Mike Norris will be on hand with some donated saplings as well. We'll have a keynote speaker at this event, Jim Thompson. He's from the Papio NRD Board of Directors. That kind of sums up our Arbor Day activity. I really encourage everybody, both board members and members of the city, to try to join us there. It's at 1 o'clock. I don't think I mentioned the time. So 1 o'clock on Friday, the 28th. So come out, hang out, support us, and support the, support the parks and support the trees and, and encourage these kids to become little advocates for our urban forest. Some other things that we've been working on as a Tree Board, the fall, last fall '22, we planted some trees in the arboretum that helped offset some of the ash that had been removed from the Emerald Ash Bore. And we also had 10 evergreens planted around the tennis courts over by the Veterans Park. So that's kind of what we've been up to, and I thank you for the opportunity to, to serve here as a Tree Board. And that's about all, yeah?
Thanks. And Mike Newsill, you're an original member of the Tree Board, aren't you?
Yeah, it's a while back.
Thirty-five years ago.
They haven't gotten rid of the old wood yet.
So... And just for people watching, the Tree Board is a volunteer board of appointed individuals, and all of them are professionals in the field of arborists. So, and Tony leverage, uses them a lot for their guidance, so they really do manage our urban forestry. So I appreciate that. Phil, you want to join me? Phil Green, if people are not aware, is leaving us. Hired him not too long ago, thinking he'd be here forever. Then he came one day and said, "I have an opportunity." And I told him I would have been disappointed if it was anyplace else, but knowing where he's going, I'm, I'm happy for him. He's going, he's going to be the City Administrator in Blair. And when we hired him, he was the Assistant City Administrator in Blair. And so it's a community that he's known, been the number two there for a long time. And got away for a while, which I think is going to benefit Blair. Get a, kind of the insider outsider, got both perspectives now. But they, their City Administrator, Rod, had been there 40 years?
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three years, decided to retire, and so unexpectedly. And so they opened it up, and so I think it was very natural that Phil applied for that. And they did a national search. It was competitive, and Phil was selected. And the council, their last meeting last week, did appoint him. And so this Friday is your last day. So just want to give you a proclamation to say thanks. It just says, "An appreciation of Phil Green's outstanding service to the City of Papillion. Phil Green began his career with the City of Papillion as the Deputy City Administrator on March 2nd, 2020, and has shown an unwavering commitment to the residents of Papillion. Phil's knowledge, service, and core values as an administrator, driven by care and concern for the residents of Papillion, have contributed to the success of countless improvement projects, many of which will be enjoyed by the community for years to come. During his tenure, Phil oversaw the renovation of Papillion City Hall. Beginning in December of 2020, these renovations modernized the 100-year-old building while preserving and enhancing its historic qualities. These renovations will extend the life of the building for many years to come. Phil has been an active local government mentor for the International City County Management Association, is currently serving as the President of the Nebraska City County Management Association, and has served as the Treasurer for the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency. Phil's leadership, strong work ethic, dedication, and kindness have left an indelible mark on both the citizens and the staff of Papillion. I therefore do present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for three years of dedicated service." The one thing it didn't say is literally the week Phil, Phil started here was the week that everything was shut down for COVID. And so his first assignment was, "You're, you're running Incident Command on behalf of the city for COVID." And then as soon as COVID was over and normalized, we said, "We're going to remodel City Hall." So really, his three years were just two major special projects. So I want to thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I greatly appreciate that. Usually you blame me for COVID, so I appreciate you didn't say that. But no, Mayor Black, I really appreciate your confidence in me and selecting me three years ago. I want to thank the council for your support and friendship over these years. It truly has been a great blessing for me to be able to be here and to work with this great staff. I want you to know that I will always be a part of the family of Papillion. And I want you to know just the great leadership that you've got in this community, both at the council level, but especially at the department head level. Now, I've been told absolutely I can't hire anybody from here, and so I understand that. But I guarantee you that I will use this community as a resource. I will point my staff to the professionalism that's down here. And one of the great things is, I'm planning to still live here. And so this not only feels like home, it is home, and I'm looking forward to being around with all of you in the days to come. So thank you.
And we've got another person leaving. Chief Bose. This one's not a surprise to people. Very honored that you've, we've had 17 years, I think? Seventeen years with us. And very pleased with the, his replacement. We're going to be in good hands. But we did that, we introduced the new guy at the last meeting, and we want to tell Bill thanks at this meeting. So just have two things I want to give him, and then have him share a little bit. One is just a little plaque, Fire Chief Bill Bose, January 2006 to April 2023, in recognition of 17 years of dedication and leadership to the City of Papillion. So I want you to have that. And then a proclamation. Bill Bose has dedicated 38 years of his life to fire service and has spent the last 17 years as the Fire Chief for the City of Papillion, leading with exceptional skill and dedication. Chief Bose has been licensed as a Nebraska paramedic since 1988 and a nationally-registered EMS provider since 1984. He's also been a Nebraska EMS instructor for over 25 years and has served as an EMS field supervisor since 1990. Through his years of service to the City of Papillion, Chief Bose successfully led the expansion of the Fire Department into La Vista in April 2014. During his tenure, he increased the number of fire stations from one to four, the number of sworn members from 18 to 64, and the number of civilians from one to five. Chief Bose played a pivotal role in establishing the Sarpy County Dive Team and the Sarpy County Tactical EMS Team, STACK Med. Chief Bose was instrumental in securing a $2.5 million federal staffing grant to hire 12 firefighters in 2014, and he established a vehicle replacement plan that helped to maintain the department's vehicles. Chief Bose played a key role in equipping Papillion Fire Department with ballistic vests and helmets and establishing the county-wide Active Shooter Task Force. I, David Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to recognize the invaluable service and remarkable leadership of Chief Bill Bose, who has tirelessly worked to safeguard the lives and property of the citizens of Papillion. The city acknowledges his accomplishments and contributions to the Papillion Fire Department and the community at large, and wishes him a happy retirement. His leadership, dedication, and devotion to the Papillion Fire Department will be deeply missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to say that?
I have to preface my remarks by saying that when Debbie passed away, after Debbie passed away, I become emotional at sometimes appropriate and sometimes strange times, like Top Gun Maverick, who would think? So I'll, I'll try my best to make this through, make through, make it through these thank yous. It was a little over 17 years ago when I was sworn in in this very room as the Fire Chief here in Papillion. You have seen many police officers and firefighters through years get sworn in, and you know how, what an event the pinning of a badge means in somebody's career. I had the honor of my mom pinning my badge on. Little did we know that less than a month later, she would pass away, and that would be the last time she'd be out of the house. So it really holds a special place in my career. There is another special person who shared my career. The person who was my consistent supporter and constant worrier, my late wife Debbie. I wish she could be here, too. I will always be thankful for having the support of my family, many of whom are here tonight. I especially want to recognize my children and grandchildren, Debbie's parents, who are my mom and dad now, and my wife Julie, for, for being here with me and sharing this moment. Life presents us with rewards and sufferings, challenges and opportunities. In 2006, you presented me with a wonderful opportunity to be Fire Chief in here in Papillion, and I will forever be grateful to you. When you hired me, as Mayor Black said, the Fire Department had 18 career firefighters and about 15 to 20 volunteers operating out of one station in downtown Papillion. In 2009, we opened Station 2 at 108th and Stram to serve the south and west part of the city. Then in 2014, you and the Rural Fire District Board and La Vista elected officials took a really bold move and combined fire and emergency services in the two communities. I thank you for the trust and confidence that you showed in the members of the Fire Department to be able to pull that off, and I think it's gone exceedingly well in that time. I am very excited for Chief Gottsch as he starts here. I am confident he, the members of the Fire Department, will, will do things beyond my wildest dreams. They will do great and wonderful things here in the community, and I feel excellent in turning the reins over to him. He's, he's off to a great start. Through my time here, I've been blessed with to be among the kindest and most helpful people anywhere. There are so many groups and individuals that make this community truly special. About six years ago, my oldest son and his family moved into Papillion from the Millard area. About a year later, I asked my grandson Connor, who was about 10 or 11 at the time, how he liked the move from Millard into Papillion. He said, "I like my school. I like my classmates and my friends." And then he added, "I like it here. It feels like a small town." No PR firm said that. He, he came up with that on his own. He was right. Papillion offers the best of what a small town is in a, in a vast metropolitan region. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. It's been a true honor to serve alongside you.
Thank you, Chief. And right after council meeting down on second floor, we do have cake, so we just have a little bit of a reception for you. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. So we can get down to the cake. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. And I'm not sure how I'm supposed to follow that, but I also, Bill, cry when I shouldn't. So my way around it is to make jokes. So I just want to speak on behalf of the city department heads, and I just want to thank you for a few things. One is thank you for the extra weight that we've all gained from the cookies you brought to every single weekly department head meeting for the past 15 years. And I really don't know what Julie's going to do with all that money now that, that you don't have to spend it on cookies. Thank you for providing, or for proving that math professors can indeed put out fires. Didn't know that. Thank you for coordinating with Deputy Chief Jones to always wear the opposite colors so we could tell you two apart. And thank you for being the fatherly figure that we didn't know we needed. And also just thank you for being a friend to all of us. And then overall, just a thank you for your dedicated years of service with the City of Papillion. It was no small feat to lead the transition to 100% paid firefighters or to lead the expansion of the Fire Department to include La Vista. Your legacy will remain throughout the Fire Department and the city through the positive culture you've created and the strong leaders you've helped develop. And you told me, you made the mistake of telling me earlier today that your friends call you Bill and your family calls you Billy. And just know that you'll always be Billy to, to me and to the rest of the department heads because you've always been family. And so enjoy your retirement. You've earned it, and you'll be Miss Billy. And then Phil, as well, congratulations on your new role. So it was well-earned and clearly deserved. So I'm excited for you and all the great things you'll accomplish, but seriously, no poaching. That's not even a joke. Oh, no, I'm just kidding. And then just personally, I wanted to thank you for covering me during my prolonged absences. You covered me for two maternity leaves and also an extended leave when my father passed away. And I really appreciate that. I'm grateful I had you there to support me for those, for two expected and one unexpected leave. So I really appreciate that. And, and don't be a stranger. You're always welcome back. So thank you. And then I'll just quickly go through a couple of things. On tonight's agenda is the approval of the union agreement between the city and the FOP. And I want to just take a quick moment to thank the FOP and the negotiation team, and the city's negotiation team for helping work through that. I truly believe that we put together an agreement that keeps the city competitive in a tight job market, but is also mindful of the budget constraints and the, the budget impacts that we all face every day. And so again, thank you to everyone. And then with the passage of this FOP agreement tonight, that does wrap up the final union agreement for the next three and a half years, thankfully. And I appreciate the professionalism from all three unions that I've worked with over the past six months to get these new agreements negotiated and approved. So thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. And then just a couple of quick updates, a quick legislative update. There are 26 days left in the session, and Mayor Black, myself, and the United Cities, we're keeping eyes on bills as they're moving forward. But just so you guys are aware, there are several bills that are kind of getting grouped into these mega bills now so that things can get, so things can move through the legislative process. So this means that sometimes we'll find out late that there's a bill in a package. But just know that we're still working on getting bills passed or opposed if needed. The process just looks a little different this year. And then finally, just a quick reminder of the spring cleanup that starts next week. It's Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily. And there's more information on the city's website. And then just really quickly, I know Brian touched on it, our annual Arbor Day next Friday at Big Elk Recreational Area, 1:00 p.m. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1995, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Kluk. Item D2, Ordinance 1997, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from MU Mixed Use to R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as Lot 205 Founders Ridge, generally located on the southwest corner, South 126th Street and Highway 370. The applicant's Carlson Consulting Engineers, Founders Ridge Senior Living. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as Tax Lot 27 and Tax Lot 29, both located in Section 21 Township 14 North Range, 12 East of the 6 p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner, South 99th Street and Portal Road. The applicant's Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates, LJI Edition. It is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Dan Dolezal. I'm the design engineer, project engineer with Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates for the project. Basically, the project's pretty straightforward. This is the third client I've had that looked at this piece of ground and the first one that's moving forward with it. It's a two pieces of unplatted ground that is dividing into subdivision. Polygon improvements have already been constructed. There's been no, no pushback on any of the fees on the part of Mr. Jensen and, and there'll be, or S.L. Jensen. We've given some, right away, to clean up the portal road right away. And tonight, in addition to this, there's a, there's a question about waiving the third. So we would appreciate your, your support in that so that we can move forward with the building permit.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. He mentioned a request for a waiver of third, and that is unusual. And so I want to explain a little bit of why it's coming up now. Typically, in Papillion, we don't waive third very often. It's usually only on bond issues and then very rare occasions after that. He mentioned that it was an unplatted lot. We have a, about every four to five years, we come up with a situation where somebody buys a tax lot and then wants to do something on it, build something on it, and then they realize they got to go through the whole plating process. I think it came up about four years ago, up in Terra with a residential house and somewhere else. And what you end up with, a tax lot is a legal lot of record. And so you've had a development that occur, and then there's a remnant lot, so like a vacant lot in a neighborhood, that's just one lot. And so it looks like a legal lot. It looks like it could be built upon. It is a legal lot of record, so it can be bought and sold. You can get a loan on it. You can do everything you want to do with it, except build on it. And you, and the average person doesn't realize that until after they bought it and they come in to get their building permit, and then they realize, oh, it hasn't been platted. And the legis, and, and so they have to go through the whole process. They have to go through the process. That, since it's an ordinance, you go into the Planning Commission, first, second, third reading of City Council. So at a minimum, you're probably talking a three-month process. They just wanted to build a lot and get a building permit and start building. Now we're delaying it three-plus years, three-plus months, simply to make it a legal lot of records so they can do what they originally wanted to do. We're looking at some, making some internal changes. We're doing some investigations to see what we can do internally on these tax lots to allow administratively make the change so it doesn't have to come to council. And that'll simplify it when it's a single lot. This case where it's a couple of lots, maybe we don't want to do administratively, but can we fast-track it on council, kind of an interim step? And then there'll be a few that still have to go through the whole process. And so staff's working on this whole tax lot issue because, again, it comes up about every four to five years. The practical situation, I think that you'll get like on a commercial building, somebody buys the lot and they're going to, they're planning to build a building. Well, before they build the building, they go sign a lease with a tenant because they don't want to build a building without a tenant. And the tenant will say, "Yeah, I'll, I'll sign a lease as long as the building built by X date." And then all of a sudden, they come to get the building permit and find out they're not going to be able to hit that date. Chances are, you lose your tenant. You're not building their building. So it really is an economic development situation. So long-winded, just kind of explain the situation, but they, they are asking for a waiver. I support the waiver because of this. We're looking at modifying this area anyway. And so with that, just for the public, any ordinance requires three hearings at a city council, an introduction in one council meeting, and a public hearing at a second one, and then council discussion and a vote at a third one. The intent of that is to have a slow, deliberate process so there's transparency, and you just don't sneak things through real fast. But in this case, the, there, we do have the authorization to waive that if we want to, but it does take a supermajority vote of the council. It's not a simple thing to do. So with that, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to waive the third reading for Ordinance 1987? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents on the waiver? Seen that? Council discussion. Please vote.
Eighteen, zero, and eight.
It is waived, so with that, we can go ahead. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1987? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilwoman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents besides the applicant? Council discussion. Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your patience during the process because you've had to go to three meetings now. Item E2, Ordinance 1994, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter 100, currently entitled Buildings Unsafe, to be amended to be entitled Property Maintenance, to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition, with local amendments to adopt procedures for enforcement and appeal, to repeal Chapter 89, entitled Brush Grass and Weeds, and Chapter 137, entitled nuisances, to amend Chapter 9 and Sections 92-1 and 92-9 to define the code official and to provide for a Board of Appeals, to move Section 137-4 regarding plastic bags to new Section 125-24, to amend Chapter 184 now, and now to be entitled abandoned vehicles, to amend Chapter 206 to include references and nuisances under Chapter 100, and to repeal the amended sections as previous, as previously enacted and to provide for an effective date, all to say, it's the Property Maintenance Code. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Seen none. Do we have any opponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hi, Lorene Renante, 1108 Park Drive in Papillion. So I'm opposed to these because these are a good example of government overreach and the potential violation of the Fourth Amendment. You all swore an oath to uphold the Nebraska Constitution as well as the United States Constitution. So what is the fiscal impact to the taxpayer and additional personnel to enforce these codes? How will this be determined? If it is a legitimate, real violation, or just a neighbor or someone else in the community complaining? If code enforcement is denied per Chapter 11-22 of the proposed codes, then law enforcement, meaning men with guns, will come and violate the Fourth Amendment. So if all this happens and a violation is found and the owner is guilty, it is a misdemeanor, not to exceed $500, or imprisonment up to six months or both. Each day the violation continues, it shall be a separate offense, then what? How many misdemeanors add up to a felony? At some point, this will be a city attorney or a county attorney issue, and what is the fiscal impact for that? Then the city has a right to file a lien on the property. Is that the goal, to foreclose on any property to become a real estate property management? Then you tie the homeowner's hand and not to allow the property to be sold or transferred, then what? The flagged or possible condemned property just sits there. How long? To what end? The initial goal for all these code updates were to rid one particular landlord. That is not going to faze him one bit. He will still get his property depreciation, tax benefits, and so on. We, the taxpayers, are the ones that are going to suffer, and the other community members. So I did a public records request. There are currently six flagged properties. Four have different owners than the one that everybody is always upset about. I did a property title search. They're a mess. I can see why that they- I can see why that they are in the messes that they are. So my question would be, has anyone reached out to any of these homeowners to establish any kind of a relationship? Is the city hoping to demolish the one particular home at 946 South Washington? I actually know someone who would be interested in buying that. Tenants have options. I know that this was the cover to take care of tenants. But under Nebraska Statute 76-1425, it does give a tenant some recourse. They also have a choice. They are choosing to stay there. They can leave, and if the city forces them out, they still are having to vacate the property. So this should not be about a personal feeling. I'm not non-compassionate, but this is to affect all residential and non-residential properties. So in a nutshell, that means me. So I would like capitalization to take care of this. So, I mean, I've got all kinds of research, so I'm waiting for questions, I guess, at this point.
Ms. Renante, I have a question.
Yes.
Just real quick. Mr. Mungard's in the queue.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Clarify for me how this ordinance violates the Fourth Amendment if we adopt it.
Well, it says that if they are denied access, code enforcement, that they will go and get whatever they need, a warrant or something, which means they're going to come back with power and they're going to want to enter property. To me, that's a violation of the Fourth Amendment.
Well, if you have to go to court and get a warrant, that means a judge has approved what you are going to do. So how is that then a violation of the Constitution if it's been approved by a judicial official?
Because I'm a personal property rights person. I know you guys are going to disagree with me, but I just think of it that way.
Okay. Then secondly, in the context of rental property, which you referenced, what we've seen is landlords that might be called a slumlord would rent property to people, take their money in rent, and not give them back in exchange a habitable place to live. Are you in favor of that?
That's a trick question.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Now, what's the answer?
The answer is, is that tenant can choose to stay there. They can choose to use the laws that are on the books to help them. They can move, but taking away personal property rights and putting these types of maintenance codes on every residential property, I don't care if you're a landlord or not, is a violation of my liberties and personal property rights.
You think a landlord has the liberty to take money from people and not give anything back in exchange?
Well, again, they're entering into a contract. That tenant does not have to stay there. So you're taking the emotional standpoint of this particular slumlord that we all know who he is, I'm not going to name him, and you're putting your emotions into it. We can't. We need to be more objective and less subjective and let capitalization and let them figure out what they want to do.
Okay, sure.
Because sooner or later, you're going to come after me.
Well, sure. The tenant, well, I would say, no, the tenant does not always have the option to walk away. If they've signed a lease, that's a contract, and then they get sued on the contract. But let's just suppose they do walk away and then the property is vacant until some other poor tenant comes in and repeats the process. How does that make Papillion any better?
Well, they don't have to move there, and they don't have to sign a contract.
So how does that make Papillion any better if people don't want to move into Papillion?
But you're making this about a tenant landlord. This isn't about tenants and landlords. This is about all residential and non-residential property. I know you want to steer me over there, but I'm not going to go in that. Absolutely not.
Well, that's, I'll tell you that as I went through the process there of examining this, yes, I see a difference between the city telling people who own the property and live in the property how they have to maintain the property. That's one level. I think there's a significant difference with people who are owning the property and taking money from people to live there and not giving back in exchange.
Well, the tenant can do some things too to take care of the property. You know, I have been a landlord, and I was also a tenant, and I get it. So I understand.
See, and I look at that, and I can't reconcile that with our motto of it feels like a...
Mr. Sunday.
I want to get back to the constitutional issue because that gets my attention. And being a retired lawyer, I know a little bit about the Fourth Amendment, and that prohibits unreasonable search and seizure, and that is true. But what is, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding your point that this violates your rights when there is a due process written right into this proposed ordinance. First of all, you have to have a reasonable cause, which would be something similar to probable cause in a criminal case, reasonable cause to gain or ask for entry in the first place. And then if you don't gain entry, then you have to take that to a judge and let that judge, him or her, decide whether reasonable cause is present in order to go in there against the will of the homeowner. I think that's entirely reasonable, not unreasonable. So please explain to me how this is a violation of your Fourth Amendment when reason is all over this document.
Because I don't think I should have to let anybody come into my home if I don't want them there.
So you wish that the Constitution said, no search or seizure, search and seizure at all, is what you're saying?
You know, I'm not a constitutionalist, and you know my background, and you know where we come together.
Okay.
But I do think it is a violation of some of my liberties, and that's why I'm against it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other opponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Joe Chase, 902 McKenzie Drive, Papillion, Nebraska. Hi, everybody. I'm not saying that these changes are bad. I'm just asking, are they really necessary? I've worked here in Papillion a long time, as you all know, and every time I have to do work in either one of the two big cities to the north that are overregulated to landlords, I just cringe. And people tell me that every day, that we don't do business in this town, or we try not to build in that town because it's way easier and way better to do things in Papillion because people will reach out and work to you. And I know, you know, almost everyone here has had to work with me on something, good or bad. And that is how this town works. And I just don't want to encourage creating new groups and new ordinances and new regulations if they aren't really necessary. Landlords have been fortunate here. Landlords have been good here. This town has never been a big rental town. At one time, I think half the rentals in this town were owned by Air Force people that got moved out and couldn't sell their house in time because they had nothing to do with it, and that was just a sign of the times. We have a lot of rules in place. Everything you guys were just talking about are already rules that are in place. I just often think we don't need more rules to make a mess of that. And the tenants in Nebraska have a, you know, a list of rights. They have lists of things they can do, and so do the landlords. And I guess my last point is, the last couple houses, at least in the part of Papillion I lived, that have been major ISOs and major problems were ones that people lived in. So I feel that if you own a house, you should have to follow the same, or if you own and live in the house, you should have to follow the same rules as landlords do with tenants. So, I mean, these are people that own their house, and they let them go to crap.
Thank you.
So anyways, thank you for your time. Just keep that in consideration. This is a great town. We've kept it this way, and you guys are all responsible for that being that. I just don't want to get any mess here.
Appreciate it. We'll have a lot more council discussion at the next city council meeting, but I do want to clarify real quick, just so there's not confusion. This is not a rental inspection program like some of the others have. It's not doing that program. So I appreciate that. Any other opponents? Welcome.
Edward Weniger, 1709 Ridgeview Drive. So I wanted to touch on what Mr. Sunday was talking about in regards to due process and going to the, and even Mr. Mungard mentioned going, getting to the judge and getting some piece of paper, right? Just because something's illegal or illegal is different than whether it's right or wrong, right? And so we can make any laws and put them on the books so that we can find violators, but that doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. That it does, I mean, the reasonable, you know, the Constitution as far as reasonableness, we far exceeded that a long time ago in terms of what we do nowadays compared to what they would consider in terms of, you know, throwing tea off boats and stuff like that. So, and then, you know, I guess my question is, like, I missed the planning commission meeting, so maybe some of the stuff was addressed there, but my question still is, right, like, what stops somebody, a tenant, from using the existing codes and laws to get the situation resolved as they need in terms of, like, if they're walking through, there's always going to be things that they uncover as, you know, later on, maybe as time goes on. If they're walking through and there's a sinkhole in the kitchen and the landlord puts some wood over it to just, you know, make it look like the floor's okay, they figure it out later, right? It seems like there is recourse already to solve those problems. Like, you take pictures of the sinkhole, you, you know, get a lawyer, do whatever you have to do, call the code violation people and get that resolved. So why, you know, we're passing a law because a guy had raccoons running out of his house. It was a visible thing, but this happens all the time, I imagine, in terms of, you know, landlords not keeping up their properties and tenants only discovering it after the fact as far as they've signed a contract. And then if somebody has raccoons or any other attic, are we, like, currently, I guess, can somebody provide a parallel situation where we imprison people because they have holes in the roof? Like, that doesn't seem like, that seems quite extreme, I guess, from my perspective. And again, we're writing a law basically because one guy is a perpetual violator. And then, yeah, I think that's my main question is, why can't we use the existing codes? And if the existing codes are not being enforced, if we're going to hire more people to enforce new codes, why can't we just hire more people to enforce the existing codes? So those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think a lot of that will come up at the council discussion. Any other opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R230064, a resolution to approve the appointment of Mark Stursmann as deputy city administrator. Your motion to approve Resolution R230064? Most by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilwoman Clu. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. Since it is a new position and appointed, you got to take the oath. You want to do it? Go up front. When Phil announced that he was, had the opportunity in Blair, he shared that with Amber and I as soon as he applied, so he was very open with us about what he was doing. So we knew it probably three months ago, maybe. And so at that point in time, Amber and I immediately started talking, well, what if he gets it? And we put everything on the table. It's an important position. Do we go hire a recruiter to go look for the right person? Do we do a national search? Do we go out into the professional associations and look for somebody? And as we were debating what was best for the organization, the staff, Amber came and said, I think the right person's internal, and it's Mark. And so we talked a lot about it, and after she and I talked, we were, we had consensus that it was Mark. And some of the recent changes you supported, what, six, nine months ago? When we created the position of Deputy Administrator Community Development, and you supported that position, and then we promoted Mark into that, I think that plays a key role in his appointment tonight. It stepped him into a different position outside of the planning. He got to see some other things. We got to interact in different ways, and that raised the level of confidence that Mark's the right person to be the city administrator. High trust level, I think, amongst the council, probably knows the city better than anybody. Been here going on 20-plus years. He was only our second planning director, so really, our planning has been developed and matured under Mark. And development's most of what we deal with, but he knows the budgets, he knows the other departments, he knows the goals. And so then when we decided it was probably Mark, gave Amber the authorization to go ahead and start visiting with him, and they talked a lot about the position. Is it right for him? Is it right for us? And I think through that conversation, they both agreed it's the right thing, and I 100% supported it. And so the timing was good. Phil's last day is Friday. We're swearing Mark in, and we have no misstep. So want to thank you, the council, for your support. Thank Amber for the recommendation, and thanks, Mark, for his willingness. Want to do the oath? You know it's long. I state your name.
I'm Mark Stursmann.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I faithfully and impartially.
And that I faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of deputy city administrator.
Perform the duties of deputy city administrator.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You know, 19 years ago, you took a chance on me, and I will remind you that at that point, then-Mayor Jimmy Blynn and City Administrator Dan Hoynes impressed upon me that it's important to be brief when addressing the city council. So I will honor that tonight. I just want to say to all of you, thank you. You know, I'm humbled by your trust. One of the things that I'm really excited about is the chance to work more closely with each of you. And as you know, we have an amazing team here, and this will give me a chance to work more closely with each of the other departments and each of the department heads, and I'm really excited about that. So again, thank you.
Thank you again, Mark. We've got a lot of big items tonight. Item F2, Resolution R230055, a resolution to approve the Fraternal Order of Police Papillion Lodge Number 19 Union Agreement. Your motion to approve Resolution R230055?
Motion.
Most by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome. State your name for the record.
I'm Kurt McLennan. I'm a sergeant with the Papillion Police Department and a member of the negotiating committee for the FOP. And I'd just like to speak as a proponent. I think the conversation that we've seen tonight in chambers is an example of what, how things run in Papillion, that people can come forward and share their opinions and be heard and disagree and still come to a consensus at the end and agree to work together. And that's what we really saw in negotiations this year, which was, not that we haven't seen that in previous years. This is my fourth contract I've helped negotiate, but I felt this was the least contentious negotiations that we've had yet in the ones that I've been involved with. I felt that the city staff that we were negotiating with were very intelligent, reasonable, and professional. And just to name who that was, that was Amber Powers, Phil Green, Carrie Svenson, Carla Heather Shaw, Risco, and then Lieutenant Ray Higgins, Deputy Chief Warren Orchard, and Chief Chris Widded. And on our side, we had our attorney, Tom McCarty, who's with Keating O'Gara, Doug Moeller, who's one of our investigators, Jess Moore, who's a road patrol sergeant, Shauna Bedrowski, who's one of our front office ladies, and Travis Roseboom, who's one of our employees we nicked from up north. When we say we can't steal, he can't steal any back, I don't know. We've already stolen so much from them. But all that to say, it was a great negotiation. I think we meet, we met compromise, just like we've seen in chambers tonight. We didn't always agree on things, but we were able to come to a center point and do things that were mutually beneficial for the union and for the city. I don't, I'm not telling any of you anything surprising, that the last seven years in law enforcement has been tough and has been increasingly difficult to attract employees and to retain employees when the press is so violently opposed to law enforcement and eager to point out our failings, which exist. But we thank you for a very fair and reasonable negotiation and a good contract, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think the trust that everybody has amongst each other, to your point, even if you disagree on a point, the trust is still there. You want the right thing, and it's just how do we come together and find it? So thank you very much. And I think it's a good time just to say the level of professionalism we have in our department. You mentioned things going on nationally and things that are hard, and people say maybe things need to change in policing. I think they need to come up, play in to see how things are done, because they were done at a national best practice level. Were accredited at a national level that very few have. The certifications that you folks have, whether it's use of force firearms, drones, whatever, just incredible talent in the department, so thank you very much. Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Item F3, Resolution R230057. This is related to the earlier item where we waived the third hearing. We've got a couple of resolutions related to that. A public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment for the property legally described as tax lot 27 and tax lot 29, both located in section 21, township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southwest corner of South 99th Circle and Portal Road. The applicant is Earhart Griffin and Associates, LJI Edition. It's a public hearing. I'll carry the comments over from before, but if you've got anything else, I'll open the public hearing.
Just want to check in, say I'm still here.
Appreciate it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Do a motion to approve Resolution R230057? Motion by Councilman Fanslow.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. So we've got not only this item, but we have three other items that specifically related to the change of zone, and I think it's important that the mayor indicated that we're going to look at changing this, because we could go through an effort of approving four items that essentially get down to the point where we have an agreement for them to do something, but they can't move forward because of the change of zone. So I want to thank the staff for looking at that and making some modifications.
Appreciate it. And we're somewhat inhibited actually by state law, so we might actually, we're going to do as much as we can do, but we actually may, we may actually have to work the legislature to give us some additional power, so thank you for that comment. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Couple more related items. F4, Resolution R230058. Public hearing and a vote, a request to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as tax lot 27 and tax lot 29, both located in section 21, township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on southwest corner, 99th Circle and Portal Road, LJI Edition. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. The applicant's still here. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Your motion to approve Resolution R230058? Most by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also related, F5, Resolution R230059. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as tax lot 27 and tax lot 29, both located in section 21, township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Located southwest corner, 99th Circle and Portal Road, LJI Edition. Your motion to approve Resolution R230059? Most by Councilman Sunday. Second by Councilman Cluque. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thanks for your patience. Appreciate it. F6, Resolution R230056. Oh, it's another related item. To approve the LJI Edition subdivision agreement. Your motion to approve Resolution R230056? Most by Councilman Cluque. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Proponents, opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. There's one more. Oh, later.
F6.
I did. That's one I just did. Okay. Don't scare me. F7, Resolution R230060. A public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as part of tax lot 31 of section 26. Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located at Third Street and American Parkway. The applicant is the city of Papillion. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Your motion to approve Resolution R230060? Most by Councilman Sunday.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Council discussion? Just so everybody knows, this is related to our selling of that one lot to the food pantry. It's enabling that transaction. Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Sort of related, F8, Resolution R230061. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of tax lot 31, section 26. Township 14 North, range 12 East of 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located, South Third Street and American Parkway. The applicant's the city of Papillion. It's the business and technology park. Your motion to approve Resolution R230061? Most by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Cluque. Any proponents or opponents? Just real quick, again, for the public, I want to explain and for council, what we're doing on this one. It's kind of related, both to the whole tax lot issue we just dealt with and the sale we're just doing to the pantry. These are all the other lots in the tech park. Those are tax lots. They haven't been platted. And so we've run into this issue ourself. We want to sell a lot. Somebody wants to buy it. We want to do a quick close. We can't do it because we got to go through the whole process. So what we're doing tonight is taking all of our tax lots, plating them. Now, in the future, somebody comes and says, hey, I want to buy a chunk of land. Administratively, we can carve that lot off because now it's a platted lot, so it's, we're just doing it down the road to make the opportunities more efficient if we're presented with an opportunity. So any other discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Travis, thanks for all you've worked on getting that together. F9, Resolution R230063. A resolution to approve the dedication of a permanent outfall sewer easement for SID 360 SRAM 108. Your motion to approve Resolution R230063? Most by Councilman Fanslow. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. F10, Resolution R230065. A resolution to approve a lease agreement between the city of Papillion and Bolino Fireworks. Is your motion to approve Resolution R230065?
Motion.
Most by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Spirit Football will be the organization that's selling fireworks at this location, correct?
I would have to ask, is that true? Okay.
Were they one of the organizations that's already been approved?
There is a license that's been granted.
That's all I want to know.
Yep. Yep. Any other? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. It's all the regular agenda items. Committees, I think we've had two committees meet. FNA, Chairman Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met after the last council meeting, and we had three items on the agenda. We got some update, as you may remember, we are trying some different avenues to deal with pickleball usage at the landing, try to make things fair for everyone, and some things were put in place to try, and we're still in that trial period. We got an update on that, discuss some other options. We also received an update on annexation number two, which we have already discussed, and there was no real action on that, other than just an update from the staff. Last item was a discussion of a potential annexation number three. And then annexation involves some area with residential and involves some developmental areas, and we decided to recommend three to one to keep the process moving, because part of the developmental is time sensitive because of valuations and other issues. So if ultimately the council as a whole doesn't approve it, we don't annex. But if the majority of the council choose to do the annexation package, including developmental areas, at least this way we'll fit it in the timeframe required. So that's why we recommended it. We're awaiting some more information from the county and a developer to see how it will proceed. It'll come back to probably the committee again, as we get a little further down the road, but we thought, at least the majority felt it was important to at least move it forward, so that way if we do annex, it'll save the city quite a bit of money if we do it in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I think public facilities met. Chairman Sunday.
I guess for the first time since last fall, Mr. Gaines was the one carryover member of that committee, so we did have to elect a new chairperson that, I guess I was the lucky beneficiary of that. But we discussed several things tonight. The first item we talked about was the makers space, which is within the library portion of the Papillion Landing. Since the opening, we've had making or makers equipment, like the 3D printer and a laser cutter, inside the library portion of the landing, which I guess has been creating a lot of noise and disrupting some of the other people using the library. So the request was that they be allowed to move the makers equipment into conference room number one, which isn't used a whole lot. We did vote to recommend approval of that change. We moved on to the Papillion Rec Organization, also known as PRO, situation with the field house, the usage, and that was discussed last fall. At that time, there were a lot of problems. Some tweaks were made to the way they handle things with regard to cancellation fees before the cancellation fees were not being enforced against local Papillion organizations, and apparently there was a lot of cancellations and nobody having to really answer for that. They changed that policy, the committee did, last fall, and the cancellation problem has almost gone away, which is good. That's a good thing. The PRO organization wanted more time. Staff has worked with them to give them the time they need. They now have the field house, I believe it was Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, which is what they wanted, essentially, I think. So we voted to support the staff and just not specifically advance any particular plan for them, but just to leave it in the hands of staff, administrative staff, to do what they think is best in that situation, because it seems to be working out really well right We also looked at requests for proposal, applicants for expansion and remodeling of the police department. It hasn't been remodeled in 20 years, I think 2000, almost 20 years. It was 2005 when that facility was constructed on a 20-year plan, so we're coming up on that. Bids were looked at by the two outfits, and it was recommended that we approve the proposal by Carlson West Pavandra, and we did vote for nothing to recommend that acceptance.
Appreciate it.
I think that covers our meeting, other than things we didn't vote on, and we're not going to even discuss that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. It's all the regular, it's all the committees that met. Any comments from the floor? Seen none? Council comments? Couple of, not a lot of updates from the last couple of weeks, but the United Cities met again, as Ms. Powers mentioned, we're meeting every Monday with the other cities to really just try to stay on top of what the legislature's doing. It's a real unusual session. It's getting hard to track. Because of the filibuster that I think everybody's aware of that's going on, very few bills are getting through, so what the majority of the senators are doing is taking one bill and then amending it with about 20 to 30 other bills. And the bills that are going in through the amendment, a lot of times are unrelated, so it's getting very, very difficult to follow a bill, and so we're actively, actively watching those. And so I'd say if you have any issues or concerns, let us know, but right now it's such an unusual session, in a lot of ways, I'm not sure if we can address the, address some. I think we're going to see a lot of unintended consequences of some bills, so I think what we're going to probably do more so is after the bills are passed, really understand the unintended consequences, and then do we have to bring any bills then to fix that? But the League of Municipalities is all over watching it. There's a lot of eyes on it, but if you have any question of what's going on, we do have some, not the latest information, but we got some pretty good information, so if you wonder about any of them, let us know. Been having a number of dare graduations. If you, if there's any of those you want to go to that are in your ward, absolutely, those are open, and feel free to go to those as well. FNA's got a meeting on, next to, on Tuesday of council meeting on the second, and I think that's the only other thing. We've got some scouts with us, and we've got some youth with us. You all get to come up to the podium and introduce yourselves, and we're going to wait. Come on up. Youth council, students here from school, scouts, come on up to the podium. Let us, let us know your name and what brings you here.
Hi, I'm Ellie Ferencro, and we were just here to, for the retirement of the fire chief.
Hi, I'm Madeline Ferencro, and I'm also here for the retirement of the chief.
I'm Jackson Shelborn, and just here for the retirement of the fire chief.
My name's Christine Holder, and we just wanted to come to show support to the fire chief and to the rest of the city.
You've been coming every council meeting. Are you interested in sitting up here and doing this?
Maybe in a few years.
Maybe. Thanks for your interest.
Hi, I'm Dane Blaze. I'm from, um, not really. Oh, we're from 463, and we're here to listen to the property maintenance code, so.
Thank you. Appreciate your interest, whatever brought you out. Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. I did want to just take a moment to congratulate Phil Green and just thank him for everything he's done.